Hello, everybody. My name is Emily Cross. I'm a recent graduate of Quincy High School, as in two months ago. And, thank you. And today, I'm going to be singing the National Anthem for you guys, so please rise for the Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets were clear, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. I am Mayor Tom Coke, Mayor of Quincy, and I want to give you a warm welcome here to our beautiful Quincy High School for Senator Ed Markey's town meeting today. And I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, as mayor of a city like Quincy, we have a lot of issues that we deal with on a regular basis. And Senator Markey and his team have been with us every step of the way on a number of issues. Most recently, the damage that we had to 150 homes along the coast. Senator Markey was on the phone immediately. His staff was on the phone immediately, and they certainly were helpful in getting the FEMA designation here for our city. So I'm grateful for all of his efforts on behalf of the City of Quincy. I am joined by Councilors Nina Liang and Councilor Noel de Bona. At this time, I'd recognize Senator John Keenan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here and to welcome Senator Markey to the Norfolk and Plymouth Senate District, which is Quincy, Braintree, Abingdon, Rockland, and Hobruk. And I may have touched on how the senator is accessible when it comes to local matters, and I can tell you that holds true for the entire district that I represent. Whenever there's an issue that needs to be addressed, a question that we have, a problem that needs to be solved, we call the senator's office, and he and his team are there for us. And in particular, I've been involved in the opioid epidemic here in Massachusetts, and it's not something that we, as a state, can solve alone. And so we turn to Senator Markey for guidance and assistance, and he delivers at the national level. Working with the Massachusetts Congressional delegation, with Senator Warren, they are at the forefront of fighting the epidemic nationally, and we are all grateful for those efforts. And just a final note. So much we read and see is questioned these days, and the Internet is one of the ways in which we now access information, and that we will continue to access information, increasingly so, going forward. And as discussions come as to what role the Internet should play, there's going to be efforts in Washington, in one way or the other, to determine how the Internet is used. Senator Markey has spent his political career developing an expertise in that area, and I can't think of anybody at this time better situated to address that issue and to make sure that the Internet serves us all and that access to information, which is so important to our democracy, remains first and foremost for everybody. So Senator Markey, welcome, and thank you very much. I was remiss. My second task was to introduce Ron Mariano. We're very fortunate to have Ron Mariano, our champion at the State House, Majority Leader, who does more for all of us than I think any of us really know because he does it quietly. Thank you, Representative Mariano.
Thank you. What's your name? Thank you, Senator Keenan. I'm used to that. I'd like to take a minute and just introduce the two representatives who work with me, who are also in attendance here. One is my colleague from Quincy, the first Asian elected as to the House of Representatives from the City of Quincy, Taki Chan. And from the coast of Hull and other points south, we have Representative Joan Machino. I have the pleasure of being the person that gets to introduce Ed Markey. I am thrilled with the attendance here today because this is very, very important. The times that we are in today are extremely trying. Those of you who read the paper and watch TV know what I'm talking about. We have things going on in Washington that are going to change the fabric of our society. We're having appointments to the Supreme Court that are going to challenge the very things that we believe in. We have a Secretary of the Interior who is dismantling the EPA piece by piece. We have the Secretary of Education, who believes more in for-profit colleges than she does in not-for-profit colleges. So it's extremely important that we have fighters on the front line. People with experience, people who have been in the trenches for a long time. Senator Markey is no stranger to these battles. When I was just starting out in politics, I can remember he had a few in the Massachusetts State House. He is someone we need, fighting for us on the front lines on all these issues. Too many issues to stand up here and articulate. We're very, very lucky to have him, and we're very lucky to have him here with us today,
Thank you so much, Representative, and what a great leader Ron is up in the State House. He is a force to be reckoned with every single day on the floor of the Massachusetts House of Representatives, and Quincy is just so fortunate to have you, Ron, play the critical role up there, representing not just Quincy but the whole state of Massachusetts. So thank you so much for being here tonight. And over on the Senate side, John Keenan, up every day, leader on opioids, leader on flood control, leader on issue after issue that is central to the well-being of Quincy but the entire South Shore. So I thank you, Senator Keenan, for your tremendous service as well. And to the mayor, I have said this to the mayor over and over again. I am your wholly owned subsidiary down in Washington. Whatever you want for Quincy, I try to deliver. And the mayor is insistent and persistent in his battles to protect the City of Quincy every single day on every single issue, and I thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for being here and for your kind words. And to Taki and to Joan, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your service up in the State House. As Representative Mariano said, I started as a state representative from Malden and Melrose up in the State House, and it is just such a great honor on a daily basis, and the two of you are the perfect embodiment of what public service should look like, and we thank you so much for everything that you do on a daily basis. Thank you. And you also have City Councilor Noel de Bona, who is here as well, and she's sitting right in the front row. Please raise your hand so that people can see you as well. Can you do that? Great. Thank you so much. Much appreciated. Much appreciated. So, this is, I'm sorry, and Nina, Nina Liang is here too. Nina, thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Yeah, thank you for being here, Nina. So thank you so much. As Ron said, we are in perilous times in our country. The President wants to name a new Supreme Court Justice who very well might vote to repeal the Affordable Care Act, to repeal this health care system that has been put in place in our country, working well, not perfect, still has to be made to work even better, keep the cost lower. But Brett Kavanaugh is someone who not only could vote to repeal the Affordable Care Act, but in repealing it, repeal the national guarantee that every individual is protected for any pre-existing condition that they may have or a member of their family may have. That's a central new law in our country. Let me just ask you here. How many of you are a member of your family, has a pre-existing condition? You are a member of your family. That's incredible. That law could, in fact, be repealed, the protection that you're guaranteed to health insurance. So that's at the top of the list. A woman's right to choose could be repealed. The issue of whether or not people are entitled, if you're a woman, to not have to pay more for your health insurance than a man does. That's the way it was historically until the Affordable Care Act went on the books nationally. The funding that is provided by Medicaid could be slashed. Medicaid is the way that the State of Massachusetts is largely able to pay for mass health, which provides health insurance for hundreds of thousands of people here in the State of Massachusetts. They want to take a machete to Medicaid in order to slash it. And the lower the funding levels for Medicaid is the lower the level of health care that every American will be entitled to, will have access to. And by the way, wasn't Emily Cross the fantastic, singing the National Anthem here today? She was just absolutely incredible. So we thank you for doing that. And by the way, isn't she the living embodiment, as a 2018 graduate of Quincy High School, of why we don't want to zero out the national endowment for the arts in humanities, right? We want to encourage young people to maximize all of their God-given abilities. Just this week, I asked Secretary Pompeo in the Senate Foreign Relations Committee why he had exceeded to the demand of a gun lobby to allow for the elimination of the ban on having downloadable guns. Have you followed this issue? This is an issue where a printer cartridge, as dangerous as a gun cartridge, can be downloaded and a plastic gun can be made. You don't have to go to a gun show. You don't have to go to a gun dealer. You just do it at home. Plastic guns. And this is just the latest example of what is happening in the Trump administration, deciding with the NRA on issue after issue that goes right to the heart of the kinds of protections which we need in the United States of America. Massachusetts has the lowest gun fatality rate of all 50 states. People can buy a gun. People can buy a gun. People can buy a rifle. They just have to have a background check. You know what the central additional safety precaution which we have in Massachusetts that they do not have in other states? If you want to get a gun, you have to go down to your local police chief. Here in Quincy, it's the Quincy Police Chief. They determine whether or not you get the gun. All 351 cities and towns, they get to decide. In parkland, in parkland down in Florida, if that young man, whose house had been visited 10 or 15 times in the preceding year and a half, had to go into the police station to get a gun license, there's a pretty good likelihood that it would have been denied to him, huh? Now, let me give you the additional number. 33,000 people died from gun-related reasons in 2017. 33,000. If Massachusetts laws were on the books for the whole country, only 7,000 would have died. Only 7,000. So are we heading in that direction, where you ensure that we have the safeguards in place so that people who should not be able to buy these guns can't do so? No. We're heading in just the opposite direction, where the Trump administration is now exceeding to people able, with the capacity, to download these guns. And by the way, since it'll be on the Internet, they won't just be downloading them in the United States, they'll be able to download them all over the world. What kind of chaos could that potentially create all across the planet with people, the wrong people, able to download these guns? So what we need to do, with Massachusetts in the lead, is continue to work to make NRA stand for "not relevant anymore" in American politics. Next, the EPA. Ron made reference to the EPA. EPA now just stands for "every protection abolished." They're just trying to name people who will go into this agency, whether it be clean air or clean water or toxics or you name it. Whatever the issue is, there's a consensus built around. On these issues of clean air and clean water, it's like 85% of all Americans. Just take that now as a part of an entitlement for them and for their families, not in the Trump EPA. So even as we just were able to finally force Scott Pruitt to quit at the EPA, what they've now named a new person, his name is Andrew Wheeler, who they're going to try to keep in a kind of a witness protection program so we don't learn his name. But one of the first things they have done is name someone who, believe it or not, is now going to be in charge of toxics. That is, the stuff that is in the ground, in the water, the superfund projects, like the Woburn Superfund Project that you may recall, the movie A Civil Action or Love Canal. So who have they named? The lawyer for Dow Chemical, who fought efforts to make Dow Chemical accountable for their actions. That's this week in environment in Washington, D.C. So on issue after issue, what we're seeing is an administration that just continues to work in a way that is undermining rather than advancing the public interest in our country. On opioids, in Massachusetts now, more than 80% of all people who are dying from overdoses have fentanyl in their system. We had to work very, very hard to increase the funding to provide better care, better treatment for people who are affected by this epidemic, but it still is a fraction of what we should be appropriating. Massachusetts last year had nearly 2,000 people who died from drug overdoses. 2,000. 80% of them with fentanyl in their system. We're only 2% of America. 2%. Now, if you multiply, in other words, 2,000 by 50, which would be the whole country, that would be 100,000 people dying from fentanyl, heroin, prescription drug overdoses in our country. That would be two Vietnam Wars in one year. Be a million people over 10 years. And the funding is still inadequate. A vision without funding is an hallucination. You cannot provide for these families if you don't, in fact, ensure that the resources are there. Now, I met with President Trump in the White House. I said to him, "Mr. President, there's a device which actually makes it possible electronically through packaging to detect fentanyl." He liked the idea. And in January of this year, in the Oval Office, because I worked with Rob Portman, who is a Republican senator from Ohio, and Shelley Moore Capitell, who was a Republican senator from West Virginia, the President signed the bill, which is going to result in $65 million now being appropriated to have these detection devices just be able to be put up next to packaging. So if the fentanyl is coming in from China and landing up at the post office up in Boston, they are now going to be able to have these devices, these guns, to be able to detect it. If it's coming across the Mexican border, they'll be able to detect it. It's not a panacea, but it's the kind of smart thinking that we need if we're going to wage this war against the bad guys who are trying to just pollute the streets of Massachusetts and the whole country. Now, the problem with fentanyl is we're at the top of the list, and what's happening in Massachusetts is a preview of coming attractions for the rest of the United States. So we have to just continue to intensify our efforts in order to make sure that we are fighting, fighting this issue. I know that the mayor is thinking about suing the pharmaceutical industry for their role in contributing to this drug crisis. And so I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your efforts in trying to make those companies absolutely It was the pharmaceutical industry, Purdue Pharma, to be specific, that basically convinced the FDA that they didn't have to worry about oxy content at the beginning of 1996 being sold. That's where it all began. And we know what the consequences of that blind eye being turned in. The FDA went along with it. And physicians, physicians did not provide the proper warning for people. They were handing out bottles of 30 and 60 Percocet oxy to individuals, two kids in high school that had a sports injury, without giving that family the proper warning. My own belief, I think every bottle should actually say, "This is an opioid. Be careful." I think when the mother has the bottle of 30, and now she has her sophomore girl or boy athlete with an injury, the parent should see it every single time that that bottle of oxy are. But right now, it's not on the bottle. And we have to fight, which is what I'm going to do, is to make sure the warning is there for every family, every time, so they can see what the danger of this drug is. And on foreign policy, we know that the President embarrassed himself and embarrassed the country in the way in which he comported himself in that meeting with Vladimir Putin. And the question is why that comes from the audience and not, in a way, it's almost a rhetorical question because everyone knows the answer as to why. And what he did today, he tweeted out again today that he wants to see an end of the Mueller investigation. And the one thing we have to do is to make sure that there is no cessation of the Mueller investigation until every single bit of information is out in public for the American people to see and to evaluate. That's what it's all about. That's what it's all about. The sad fact of the matter is that with these tapes that have just come out, we now know more about the conversations between his lawyer, Michael Cohen, and the President than we do about the conversations between Vladimir Putin and Trump, as he was discussing the national security interests of every single one of us. Members of the Senate don't know? Members of the House don't know? The Secretary of State doesn't know exactly what is taking place. So from my perspective, we just have to ensure that we demand accountability from the President, from these Republicans in Washington, who continue to try to shield him from answering the questions which the American people have a right to know what the answers are. So this is an incredible historic moment. The President met in secret with Kim in North Korea. He met in secret with Vladimir Putin. And from my perspective, on the Senate Foreign Relations Committee, we had Secretary Pompeo in last Thursday to answer questions, and he didn't have the answers as to what, in fact, the commitments were. When is North Korea going to begin to take down their ballistic missiles? When is North Korea going to begin to take down their nuclear weapons? He doesn't have the answer. What is the agreement that was reached between Putin and Trump on nuclear weapons? What is the agreement that's been reached on Crimea, on the Ukraine, on issue after issue? He does not know the answer. The Secretary of State. I said to the Secretary, I said, "I'm afraid that Kim in North Korea is taking Donald Trump for a ride, Mr. Secretary." And he said to me, "Fear not, Senator. Fear not. There's no evidence for people not to fear, not to be concerned." So it's such a great honor to be here in Quincy, the city of presidents, okay? Presidents who you can admire. Presidents who you can trust. Presidents that played the role in creating the United States Constitution and creating the foundations of American foreign policy, you know, going back now more than 200 years. So in a lot of ways, I know that So in a lot of ways, I know that it's my responsibility down in Washington to represent this incredible history of Quincy, this incredible history of our country that really began here. And so I give you my word that I try to do that every single day, in every single way, to protect the beliefs that you have. It's an honor for me to be here in Quincy and Weymouth and Randolph and Marshfield and all the other communities that are represented here today. And, and, and so what I would like to do, if I could, is we can go to the floor for people who want to ask questions. And we have Christina and Rory, who are right here. And if anyone wants to come down here for the next, just line up, come on down, and then you can ask questions. And I'll try to stay for a while and answer, you know, as many as I can. So Christina, if you would like, please, and if you, if you could, when you speak, if you could identify yourself and where you are from, I would appreciate it.
Hi, Senator. I'm Betsy Sowers, and I'm a resident of Weymouth.
Beautiful.
I'm a board member on Four River Residents Against the Compressor Station and Minister for Earth Justice at Old Cambridge Baptist Church. I was, I also attended your event in Belmont, and I wanted to thank you a lot for the climate summit that you had there. It was, was very informative and helpful. As you know, we've been fighting this compressor station and pipeline in Weymouth for three years. And with 100% support from our local politicians, both Republicans and Democrats. But our problem is in Washington with FERC. And as you know, they are also undergoing, trying to reform their, some of their policies right now. So my question for you is, what might you do to help us in holding FERC accountable to their efforts at reform? Particularly, one thing that we are concerned about in Weymouth is that the permit that Enbridge has for this compressor station is going to expire in January. And FERC tends to just say, "Oh, well, we'll just extend it for you," without looking for why it is that it's been three years and they haven't been able to build it because they're in court with so many lawsuits and so much opposition from state and local folks. So any help you can give us would be great.
So, so for those of you who don't know all the details of this, so this is the Spectra Atlantic Bridge Pipeline. Okay. So what is that exactly? Well, a Canadian company, Enbridge, has a pipeline. And that pipeline now sends natural gas from Canada down south. What they want to do in Weymouth is make it possible to have a compressor station that would reverse the flow and send it from south to north. So the question you have to ask yourself is, well, why would they want to do that? And the answer largely is part of an export of natural gas strategy which the Canadian company has. In other words, they want to find a way of having natural gas come out of Pennsylvania, come out of other states, ultimately come through Weymouth, head north, then ultimately turn it into LNG, and then export the natural gas out of the country. Now, how does that help Massachusetts exactly? What's the Massachusetts angle on that? Not exactly clear. But we do know this. It's the people in Weymouth who will take the environmental risks as this compressor station is, in fact, constructed. And so back in 2017, Senator Warren and I asked for a rescission of the authority that FERC had granted for the construction of this project. And in June of last year, we requested and are demanding now that FERC do an assessment of the, all the risks that are surrounding the construction of this unit. And so all I can promise you is this, that I have been working on this consistently now for the last three years. I'm going to continue on the case. I'm not going to allow the FERC just to turn a deaf ear to Weymouth and the surrounding communities. And I'm not going to allow a business plan of a Canadian company to wind up exporting natural gas. And by the way, the more natural gas we export overseas, it's the higher the price for natural gas, which remains here in the United States because we have less of it. So it hurts every customer. It hurts every business. So thank you for raising your voice, and thank everyone who has been working on this issue to draw public attention to it. I will try to be by your side the entire way. So thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Hello, Senator. My name is Antonio Wackewelli of Quincy, Massachusetts, just over there. And my question is Cynthia Nixon, who's running for Governor of New York, said, "It's not just about electing Democrats, it's about electing better Democrats."
It's about electing what, sir?
I'm sorry? Better Democrats. And what Senator Schumer said during 2016 is, "Every Democrat we lose in the city, we pick up the Republicans in the suburbs." And what concerns me is with the Supreme Court that you brought up earlier with Brett Kavanaugh, three of your colleagues of the Democratic Caucus, Heidi Heitkamp, Joe Donnelly, and Joe Manchin, they're facing tough reelection campaigns in their state for their elections. And those three put Neil Gorsuch on the Supreme Court. So I'm very concerned that Brett Kavanaugh is going to be confirmed with or without the corporate Democrats on their side. So looking forward, do you think that it's time that we, as a party, can come together behind a new, different type of message so that even when we take back the White House or maybe even the Senate or the House in 2018, 2020, that we won't have any Judases in our caucus?
That we won't have what? I'm sorry?
The Judases in our caucus.
If we win the Senate, we're not going to be having any more hearings on Donald Trump's Supreme Court nominees, okay? So that's what you have to be thinking, okay? When we control, he's not sending up any more Brett Kavanars, he's not sending up any more Neil Gorsuches to the United States Senate, because we then decide whether or not there's a hearing. So we need the majority, please, on January 1st of 2019, in the Senate, so that we control the Senate Judiciary Committee. You want, you want Dianne Feinstein chairing the committee? She is unalterably opposed to Brett Kavanaugh being confirmed as a Supreme Court Justice. This kind of gets into the Dianne Feinstein, Orrin Hatch dichotomy, if you know what I mean. I have a pretty good idea where this audience is on that issue. So in each and every one of those cases, that's the case. But I would not, as yet, despair, because Susan Collins from Maine is already saying that she's concerned that any justice be confirmed, who would repeal, Roe versus Wade. Lisa Murkowski is in the same situation. And there are many other issues, labor issues, environmental issues, civil rights issues. He has left behind, ready for this number? He's left behind a million pages of writings that we, as Democrats, are going to demand that Brett Kavanaugh and Donald Trump produce for public observation before we have that vote on the floor of the United States Senate. And we are not going to relent in that demand. So this battle is not over. We're just beginning this fight. And you just saw last week on the Senate floor, an attempt by, just, I'll explain to you a little bit how the Senate works, that historically, no federal judge can come to the floor until both senators from that state produce something, which is called the blue slip, which is just a slip that's blue that you sign your name on, that says it's okay to bring that judge out for a vote. But you need both senators to agree upon it. So in Massachusetts, it's Elizabeth Warren and I. Last week, both senators from Oregon, that is Ron Wyden and Jeff Merkley, would not sign the blue slip on a Circuit Court of Appeals judge. For the first time in American history, Mitch McConnell brought the judge out anyway for a vote on the floor, just ignoring all historical senatorial precedent. And you know what happened? Republican Senator, Senator Scott from South Carolina, he objected. He didn't, they didn't have the votes because John McCain wasn't there. So because of the terrible civil rights record of that Circuit Court nominee. So the more information we put out there, the more that we let people know about Brett Kavanaugh and his background, his writings, his attitudes, and the more active that people are, is the more likely that we can win this vote. So I'm not giving up on this. We, we need, we need to have a fight on it. We found three Republicans, with John McCain being the most notable, who said no to the repeal of the Affordable Care Act. We find three Republicans, then we have defeated Brett Kavanaugh. And we're going to do all, we're going to do our best to accomplish that goal before we have the vote, most likely, in the end of September or beginning of October. So thank you, sir. Over here, yes, ma'am.
Hey, is this on? Is it? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I am Crystal Evans. I live in Braintree. And I'm wondering if you're aware of the Disability Integration Act that Senator Schumer from New York introduced last year? The goal of this legislation is to ensure that people with disabilities can live in the community rather than in facilities. You mentioned the healthcare legislation that Donald Trump is after, but I am wondering, the cost of care is substantially higher for those of us that get stuck living in a facility. And I'm ventilator dependent. I ended up in the hospital, what, 200, almost 250 days total?
Can you move in the microphone a little closer?
2016 to 2017. My healthcare bills were in the millions. But I can independently live in my home without home nursing with the right supports in place, which is significantly cheaper if this legislation goes through. I have a lot of friends in the same situation. They're fighting to get out of assisted living facilities into their own apartments and accessing healthcare that way.
Well, I'm with you. We, you know, we passed the Americans for Disabilities Act in 1990. Most of the laws that relate to the deaf and the blind, those are my laws, including my 2010 law that says that every one of these devices is completely 100% accessible to deaf and blind people, 100%. Industry didn't want to do it. But now this, these devices are for the whole planet, if you're deaf and blind. What you're talking about is all part of the story, you know, that we are not so poor as a country that we can't afford to provide access to all of the facilities, the help, the care, which people have by no choice of their own. And so I'm with you all the way. I will fight with you all the way. I'm a proud co-author of the Americans for Disabilities Act in 1990, and I updated it in 2010 for wireless devices. But we need, we need to make sure that we have on-ramps to the internet for people, but we need on-ramps for, in real life, too, to give them access to the care which they need. So I'm with you a million percent. You want community-based care, exactly. And we have to fund it. Again, a vision without funding is an hallucination. We have to put up the dough for it. I will fight hard for you to get the funding for that program. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yes.
Hi, Bonnie Gorman, Quincy resident, Vietnam veteran, and Gold Star family member. I wanted to talk about the war economy. As you know...
Rory, yeah, yes.
Is it close enough? Are two... As you know, we've been in continuous war, never-ending war, for the last 18 years and counting. It's only gotten worse. Department of Defense, Department of Education, and Veterans Care is now taking up almost 70% of our federal dollars. We don't have the funding for independent living. We don't have the funding for Medicare, Medicaid, in many other service, education, any number of service programs. And so our domestic programs are being cut as a result of this overwhelming amount of money that's going to the Department of Defense. What is your plan to reverse that? We would like to see a 25% cut in the military budget. The foreign policy over the last 18 years, and really effectively 28 years with the first Gulf War, is, has failed. And we're not any safer now than we were before. And as veterans and as citizens, we would like to see our money spent wisely domestically and not getting involved in endless foreign incursions.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
No.
The defense budget is too big. In this defense budget that we just voted on a month ago, they actually had the temerity to add a whole new generation of nuclear weapons. And they're miniaturized nuclear weapons. They're weapons that can actually be used in the middle of cities because they won't kill that many people from the perspective of the, of the Pentagon. And, and all I can tell you is that in a Trump era, in a Republican control of the House and Senate, the priorities are all upside down. You know, we have people who need help with opioids, our disabilities, our student loans, income inequality. And instead, they have enough money to have submarine-launched nuclear-tipped cruise missiles when we don't have enough targets for them for the ones we already have. And if we ever use nuclear weapons in any kind of a scenario, it would be the lowest point in the history of the planet. So we don't need any more to deter anyone, especially the kinds which we can argue can make it more possible to win and fight and survive a nuclear war. That is lunacy to even be saying such a thing. So I voted against the defense budget this year so that I could send a message that we are not, in fact, taking care of the priorities of ordinary American families. Thank you for being here. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Fred. I'm from Stoughton. And that sort of is what I was going to address. We have a 17, $718 billion defense budget and not a...
A little bit closer, Christina? Yeah, go ahead.
That was approved this year to fight wars, and we're doing nothing to protect ourselves from cyber attacks. Someday, this summer, the Russians or Iran or China can shut down the national grid. They can blow up the Plymouth Nuclear Power Plant. They can do anything they want to our waters. We are being attacked by cyber, and nobody's doing anything but building missiles. It needs to stop because we don't need to fight wars. Our cyber is going to get us.
Okay. So I was the Chairman of Energy in the House Representatives in 2009, 2010. So the CIA came to me. The FBI came to me. All of the intelligence agencies came to me, and they said that the electricity grid of the United States is vulnerable to an attack by one of our adversaries. Will you do something about it? So what I did was I took my Republican counterpart down into the room. There's a kind of a, a secret death unto you if you repeat a word which you hear room, which House and Senate members can be briefed on our national security issues. So they came in and they told us how vulnerable the electricity grid is of the United States to an attack. And if you knock down the electricity grid, you're knocking down the... And if you knock down the electricity grid, you're knocking down the banking system, you're knocking down, about 40% of all of our military facilities are on the grid. That's the public grid. So you're also knocking down our military facilities here domestically. So what I was able to do was to get near unanimous Republican support, and I passed the bill mandating a dramatic upgrade in the security of the grid of the United States. It went over to the Senate. Over in the Senate, the electric utility industry found an ally in John Kyle, who is the senator from Arizona. And what he was able to do is to put a hold on the bill and kill it for the electric utility industry. Then, in the 2010 elections, we lost the House of Representatives, the Democrats. And so my ability to bring the bill up again was eliminated. Because since then, although just about every committee in the House and Senate has some jurisdiction over cybersecurity, we don't do anything about it that's meaningful, even though we know the risk is there. And intensified, the Russians are probably testing our electric grid every single day. The Chinese are probably testing our electric grid almost every single day. And what we have to just be realistic about is that we still haven't mandated the upgrade of the totality of our electric grid system to withstand that attack. So I'm agreeing with you 100%, sir. And, and I'm gonna continue to fight every single day. I'm bringing my bill up at some point in order to make sure that I make that electric utility industry accountable. So thank you, sir, for everything that you're doing. Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, Jim, Jim Tanner, Quincy. Now, first of all, it should be noted that Obama was the one that first proposed a trillion-dollar upgrade of America's nuclear arsenal, not President Trump. And I'm wondering why Democrats are trying to whip up Russophobia hysteria. Isn't it bad enough that Democrats destroyed Libya and left it in chaos now? Yeah, do you mind?
No, no.
Do you mind, please?
Please, please let the gentleman speak.
Right. So do you really want to provoke a cold war with Russia that could lead to a nuclear war? Why don't you work with our president in trying to establish peace and better relations with President Putin and Russia? This is the kind of partisan politics where you're trying to score political points that is extremely dangerous and could lead to all-out war. And there's no excuse for that kind of politicking.
Okay, well, there's, there's a, a nuclear treaty that we have with Russia on intermediate nuclear forces that are deployed in Eastern Europe by the United States and by Russia. The president just met with Vladimir Putin. What was the conversation that the president had about the violations by Putin and Russia of the intermediate nuclear force agreement? Also, so far, all we've heard is crickets. On the issue of the START Treaty, that is, the treaty that was used on strategic nuclear weapons in order to reduce them, it was an Obama-era bill. John Kerry, to his credit, shepherded it through the Senate Foreign Relations Committee and through the, through the United States Senate. It can be automatically reviewed and renewed right now to cover another five-year period from 2021 to 2026, five-year period. What have we heard about that? Okay, so from my perspective, I do want to work with the president on the intermediate nuclear force agreement. I do want to work with the president on the START agreement. But what I need is a president who is pressing Putin on that issue in the same way that we want him to be pressed on Crimea and Ukraine and compromise of our elections, okay? And we still haven't had him have any public evidence of accomplishing that goal.
Why does NATO keep pushing Putin? Why do you bring your forces right up to his borders? Why don't you give him a chance? Why are you trying to provoke a war and demonize President Putin and Russia?
President Putin... President Putin is a bully. He has invaded Crimea. He's invaded Ukraine. President Putin is a bully. And to bullies, you must show...
What you did to Iraq and Libya?
You, you, okay, okay, thank you, thank you, sir. I appreciate, I appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, over here, over here, yes, please.
Hello, Senator. First of all, thank you for grace under fire. We appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And all your hard work. I'm a very strong supporter of yours. Judging by all the happy faces and clapping, this was a wonderful speech that you gave. Unfortunately, I was not able to access it as I am deaf. I did read your lips when you asked if everyone could hear you, and I'm pretty sure I was the loudest no in the auditorium. I would like to ask for all politicians to consider making more inclusion within the community to tap the large potential pool of voters and supporters that can help make a change and difference in this country. Unfortunately, because I did not have an interpreter or a call operator available tonight, I missed some very crucial points that you were no doubt making, and I would like to be more included. I'm part of a group called ASSESS and will be delighted to help you and your staff in any way, but we want to get out there and help you.
And you're talking about the...
I'm a voter.
The rights of the deaf...
Yes.
...in, in America. Okay, well, again, if you want to be my partner on these issues, then I want you as my partner. I, 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 I'll give, she'll give you a little bit of history. In 1990, my first law for the deaf was, you know on television where the closed captioning goes across the television?
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'll tell you. That where closed captioning on television. That's my 1990 law. So that closed captioning is there. And you know what? It's great for deaf people. It's also great for immigrant children to just see English going across the bottom of the TV screen. It has a lot of, and it actually helps guys in bars be able to watch the sports scores at the same time that they're, you know, trying to have a conversation. And so what I did was in 1990, then in 1991, then in 1996, then in 2010, I just kept looking at all the devices that deaf people are dependent upon. And, and I did my best to continue to make these devices more accessible. Helen Keller had someone leave from Boston, Annie Sullivan, and go down to Alabama in order to help her learn how to write, how to add, by using the palm of her hand. And that was someone from Boston who did it, and a great inspiration to me, a great inspiration to me. And now we move to the Palm Pilot, huh? An electronic device, you know, just continuing to advance all of these technologies. So I want, I would put your community at the top of the list of the people who I want to help, I've tried to help. And if you just talk to Christina as soon as this event is done, then you guys can all come into my office, lay out what you think the agenda should be for the next number of years, and then I will just sign up and try to get it done for you, okay? So thank you so, so much. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good evening, Senator. First of all, thank you for hosting us in this beautiful venue. And got a couple pieces of bipartisan legislation I'd like to talk about and ask your support for.
A little bit closer, Rory.
Sure. Okay, thank you. HR 6312, the Personal Health Investment Today Act. It is basically bipartisan legislation. It was introduced by Representative Jason Smith of Missouri, Wisconsin Democrat, Representative Ron Kind. And basically, it gives incentives for people to take care of their health by giving tax incentives to be a member of a gym.
A member of the family.
No, a member of a gym.
Of a gym.
A gym membership.
A gym, I see.
Yes. And it's tax incentives basically to promote one's health. And that's HR 6312.
That's very interesting to me, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And then there's another one I'm gonna ask your support for. And this is regards to retirement. It's RISA. It's a bipartisan package again. And according to AARP, RISA is an important step towards improving retirement policy. It was introduced by Representative, our own Representative Richard Neal of Massachusetts, Democrat, head of the Ways and Means Committee. And basically, what it does is help people, the average person save for retirement. As you know, social security is not enough. This bill is going to give tax incentives for people, average people, to put money away for retirement.
Okay, that sounds like a great idea. Richie, Richie Neal is the author of it, so there's a high, high probability that I will be supporting that in the United States Senate. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. I have one more question.
One more, yes.
Sorry.
Quickly, yes.
Oh, quickly. Massachusetts estate tax threshold is $1 million. It says, it sounds like a lot, but it's one of the lowest thresholds in the country. I know you probably were maybe, I'm not, you weren't part of legislation for this, but is there any way of maybe making it more in line with the federal estate tax threshold?
You mean changing Massachusetts law?
Yeah.
I'm gonna leave that up to Ron Mariano and Senator Keenan and, and the state representatives, the state representatives to decide how to handle Massachusetts law. But thank you so much for being here. Much appreciated. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you so much for your coming and your time. Please, I speak about immigrant of my son. He is high educated person. He is get PhD from Japan in cancer research. His wife also PhD from Japan in diagnostic X-ray. All family here in USA and all family high educating, my family, you know? And three of my sons work with US Army. And they told them, anyone work with US Army and USA can get all family. So only he not coming. They reject his case. We asked about his case, they said very good, no security good also, security good, everything for him good. He is speak five language, French, English, Japanese, Arabic, and Kurdish. He is very clever, not because he's my son, all the people speak about him.
It's always about the mother, though.
And my fam, you see, and my family all high educating. If you want the dentist...
What country are you from?
From Baghdad, Iraq. So please help me. We waiting him for more than six year or more.
Okay, so I will, I will try to help you, okay? So as, as soon as we're done here tonight, just go to, go to Christina up in the back of the room. We'll take your case, your son's case, and we'll try to help you, okay? If it's humanly possible, we will try to help. Thank you for coming. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Senator. My name is John Dennehy from the town of Braintree. My question relates to the Russians. Our own intelligence community has established the fact that they attacked us. They didn't interfere, they didn't meddle. They attacked us two years ago, and they were successful in electing the president of the United States. Here we are, two years later. Nothing has been done, clearly by the executive branch, so it falls to the legislative brands. My question to you is, in the back room of the United States Senate, what are your Republican colleagues telling you? How do they justify to you the fact that they're not defending the intelligence community despite daily assaults by our commander in chief? And what can you do as a member of the minority party to help protect us in the upcoming election, which is now only three months away?
Good. So you are right, okay? Privately, a lot of Republicans really don't like what the president is doing. But his favorability is so high amongst the Republican primary voters all across the country that most of them just don't want to step out and say that what happened is actually a crime against our country. In the House of Representatives, as I said earlier, the, the House Intelligence Committee Republicans has pretty much already whitewashed the entire scandal, which is why we have to win the House of Representatives, by the way. Why, why we have to call Stevie Lynch Mr. Chairman, okay, over there, so that we have, so that we have a, a full investigation. So what we try to do on an ongoing basis is encourage the Republicans to say no to the worst excesses of this president. It's not easy. You know, there are senators who took him on who now can't even win in a Republican primary. You saw what he did to Representative Sanford down in South Carolina. He just tweeted out that he should be defeated, and he got destroyed 60 to 40 in a Republican primary, even though there was no evidence of him ever having cast a liberal vote in his career. Okay, so that's the kind of crazy atmosphere that these Republican primary voters across the country have put too many of their elected Republican officials. To the credit of Senator Richard Burr of North Carolina, he has worked with Mark Warner of Virginia in a bipartisan basis to try to keep this whole Mueller investigation protected, to conduct the investigation on a bipartisan basis. And again, I don't know how it's all gonna wind up. No one does. And no one knows what the Republicans are gonna do at the end of the day. But all I can tell you is this, I try every single day to wake up to the tweet of the day from Donald Trump. And, and it's the most animated I have ever been in my entire political career. So I see it as my job to respond to the Trump a day, you know, no matter what he's doing. And so don't so many other people, including people here. Sometimes I think you probably have to strap yourself in as you're watching MSNBC or CNN. So just don't jump out of the seat as you hear the next atrocity, right, that is being attempted to be perpetrated. So all we can really do is turn this into an election issue, okay? To give you your answer, we're, we're 100 days away. There's an election coming up. That's really what John Adams had in mind back in 1789, as the Constitution is now being implemented. So there is accountability. You can feel the pendulum swinging back, and you can feel kind of the, the accountability which is now being introduced into the system. And I think at the end of the day, that Congress is a stimulus response institution, and there's nothing more stimulating than millions of voters all saying, you're heading in the wrong direction. Head back the other way. And it's all in the hands of ordinary people at the grassroots all across this country, led by Massachusetts. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is James Iketa of Quincy. Actually, I teach here in the history department. And my question is about, oh, thanks. Apologies for the, you know, summer. I have a question about civic engagement and civics, okay? So I, I think, very, very, I have a question about civics.
You teach?
Yes, I teach history here.
At Quincy High?
Yeah, right down the hall.
He teaches Quincy, he teaches history at Quincy High, yeah, beautiful.
I believe very, very strongly the government will work best if more and more people are involved at the municipal and state and federal levels. I think it's important that people have to get involved. And that means we have to build a culture of civic engagement. I think it's important that we build a culture of civic engagement. And the problem is, the only people who are doing real mobilizing work are doing so for short-term political goals. There are people who are working for a party or for whatever else. They're concerned about an election, about a particular issue, whatever it is. And I think what we need to be doing is figuring out a way that we can cultivate a culture of civic engagement that lasts longer than an election cycle. And I'm just curious, in your opinion, how can we do that? How can you do that? How can we, as the citizenry, help to, to build this culture of engagement that lasts longer than just a couple of years?
It's not easy. I, I think probably the easiest way to think about this is that there were preceding generations here in Quincy, all across Massachusetts, who were part of the New Deal movement, so that we tried to figure out how to have a Securities Exchange Commission, how to have social security, who then were around during Harry Truman, as he put together his Fair Deal, not New Deal. And all those laws got put on the books through Jack Kennedy and Lyndon Johnson, as they did the Civil Rights Voting Act, as they did Medicare and Medicaid, through Jimmy Carter, through Bill Clinton, through Barack Obama. So what is happening is that Donald Trump is challenging all of it, all of it. So a lot of times, when I talk to young people, they kind of say, oh, what a shame I wasn't around in the 60s. Oh, what a shame I wasn't around, oh, what a shame I wasn't around. Well, this is it. This is the generational challenge. And so we need kind of an intergenerational compact where older people and younger people... partner, partner. And that the older people helped to explain how all these laws got on the books. There was no Environmental Protection Agency until 1970. So we had made it from 1776 to 1970 with no EPA. This is not so long ago. There was no Medicare, there was no Medicaid. This, I went to college on a national student defense loan. My father was a milkman for the Hood Milk Company. Am I smarter than my father or mother? No. Am I smarter than my grandmother or grandfather getting off the boat from Ireland? No. Do I work harder than a milkman? No. That's a hard job. I don't have that job. My mother didn't want me to have that job. And the loans that were put on the books were called National Student Defense Loans. Over the Boston Public Library, the inscription is, "The best defense of a nation is the education of its people." So my mother was valedictorian of her high school class, but my grandmother died from Ireland. So before FDR, the social safety net was, one of the girls has to stay home. So my mother had to stay home. My mother didn't get to go to college. Am I as smart as my mother? My mother used to do calculus at the kitchen table for fun when I had it. She never had it, and she could figure it out. I had it and I couldn't figure it out, right? So women weren't given these opportunities, right? So I'm the son of a milkman, a woman who had to just stay home and raise three kids, and then you don't wanna be one of the three kids she raises later, being her own kids. That's not a good situation, okay? She was like an expert on not letting you get away with anything. But nonetheless, all these lessons from the past are all being illuminated right now, where Trump proposes a 20% cut in the NIH research budget. Trump proposes a 20% cut in the Department of Education budget. Trump proposes zeroing out the National Endowment of the Arch, the National Endowment of the Humanities. Trump proposes a 20%, uh, cut in the National Science Foundation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the answer to you is, our job is to have an intergenerational compact, where older people work with younger people, help to explain to them how all these laws get on the books, how nothing is permanent. Uh, a woman's right to choose, not permanent. EPA protecting clean air and clean water, not permanent. It depends upon this generation of Americans to respond to its historic challenge, its historic challenge. Every generation has to step up and do its work, okay? So thank you for being a history teacher, 'cause you're in the front lines of this battle. Uh, and, uh, to a very large extent, that's why I am, uh, and, and let me just finish up, you know, you know, now you got me going, but, um, you know, so, so when my mother got married, she was in her mid-30s and, uh, she was like 36, 37. So she married the milkman, my father, uh, and, uh, a Lawrence vocational high school graduate, my father. So he was four years younger. So now my mother gets Alzheimer's. And I said to my father at one point, "Pup, you know, should we think about putting Ma in a nursing home?" And my father said to me, "Eddie, your mother was valedictorian. She married me, you know, a milkman. This was, it was an honor that your mother married me, okay? It was an honor. Your mother's never stepping foot in a nursing home. We're keeping her here in the living room, okay?" So at age 80, 82, 84, 86, 88, 90, she's in the living room. Now I'm there with my father, but it's my father, the milkman. And the right arm of a milkman is like something you never saw before in your life, lifting six milk bottles all day long, every single day. But not every family has a milkman's right arm in the family. Families are heroes, but they need help. So for Alzheimer's families all across this country, we need more funding for research. We need more funding to take care of, of these home care health givers, all right? Families who are trying to take care of their, their loved ones. So all of this just has to be explained to young people. It does, it's not coming from somewhere. It's not some miracle. It's not the miracle of lows and fishes. It's political activism that makes it possible for these things to happen. And I know that miracles happen because I'm a senator from Walden, right? From that house, you know? And, and every child should be able to be able to maximize their God-given abilities. And we need this generation of young people to rise up to make that same case for everyone. In, but in partnership with the preceding generations. We need everyone on the playing field, bar 2018 politically, in order to make sure we defend all these things that we care so much about. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
My name's Karen Murphy, and I come from Quincy. I wanna know about, uh, how you can help with the Department of Veterans Affairs in improving the claims, uh, and how you can help, uh, moving them forward faster. I've been waiting at least five years or more to be heard before the review board. I have a veteran VA lawyer that, uh, I'm in, I guess, uh, a, you know, a claim pending. It's going nowhere, and it's still going nowhere.
Okay, here's what I'll do. If you talk to Rory, as soon as this, um, night is done, Rory will take care of your case for you, okay? So we'll work on your case specifically, and we'll also work much harder to make sure that the VA has the resources they need in order to protect people. My wife is actually a retired two-star admiral and, uh, and a public health service doctor. And she joined the public health service right out of medical school, okay? And so I know that this is a huge issue. I know how many people in, in our country have served us, and we now must serve them. And that means we cannot be having any shortcuts in terms of the funding of the VA, the help they get, cutting the red tape. Rory will help you on your case, and then you can talk to us about what else you might want me to do in order to help you. So I'll tell you what it is. It's 7:30 right now, and what I'd like to do is just to go for another 15 minutes until about quarter of eight, so I'll try to answer as many questions very succinctly, uh, as I can. Yes, ma'am?
Stacey Sutton, Hall, Massachusetts.
By the way, State Senator Walter Timmelti is here. Walter, where, where are you? Senator, right back up here. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming, Walter. Much appreciated. Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you, Senator. Yeah, please.
Stacey Sutton.
Can you move in a little bit?
Stacey Sutton, Hall, Massachusetts. I was recently forced to retire due to catastrophic illness. Uh, received, I requested and received a copy from Mass General Hospital, which was for $90,000 for a three-day stay without surgery. What is being done to keep medical, health, pharmaceutical costs that's affordable to middle-class, because there's no subsidy money for middle-class, and we're falling through the cracks here? What can you do to lessen my anxiety as I go forward in a very uncertain future?
Okay, so what is your coverage? Where do you get your coverage from?
I, right now, I'm on Medicare, and I have supplementary gap insurance as well.
And you have what?
I have a Medicare gap program as well.
Yeah, so...
They don't cover a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, I need supplies that they're not covering. I spend, my job right now is no longer being a teacher, I'm a full-time advocate for myself on the phone.
Um, that's what we should be talking about. And I know that's what they're talking about up in the State House, okay? When you, when you look up at Massachusetts, you look at the state that invented kind of the Affordable Care Act. But what they're trying to do now is figure out the smartest ways in which now they can control the costs. So we're gonna have to do that as well. I'll tell you why, because Donald Trump is not doing that. Because there's no hearings that we have down in Washington, you know, aimed towards accomplishing, no, well, in Massachusetts, actually, to their credit, there, there is a lot of important discussions that are going on. But we have a long way to go. And here's what I know, that when the Republicans talk about cutting $800 billion out of the healthcare system of the country, and all of them vote for it, um, that we're in a mighty battle right now in order to make sure that the funding is there, in order to keep these costs, um, low, or as low as possible for, uh, families across this country. So, um, it's the un, it's still the unanswered question, what we're gonna do on pharmaceutical costs, what we're gonna do on healthcare costs in general, and we're going to have to just try as best we can on a bipartisan basis to finally come together. I think that's a real agenda that we could put together next year if there was a much closer divide between Democrats and Republicans in Congress. I think we have a good chance of, of potential, not a good chance, but a potential that we could work together, uh, because problems like yours are central. And if I can help you on a personal basis, then I wanna do that as well. And if you, again, afterwards, if you talk to Christina, I will try to help you. Back over here, yes?
Yes, uh...
Senator, the final, final, uh...
Yeah, I, 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 it's, it's just, I just have to, I have to, I wanna get in a, just a few, I, I wanna get in a...
(inaudible) you see 1,000 pages, you're trying to see everything that you read in your packet, consequences, you don't want to be in the papers.
Good, good, thank you. Appreciate it. Yes, sir?
Senator Markey, my name is Jeff Stone. I'm from the town of Milton, and thank you very much for holding this meeting tonight. Uh, I'm here to make a suggestion for action on what I think is an ongoing human rights emergency, which is the family separation of asylum seekers.
Very good, thank you.
I think of all the things Donald Trump has done, he has gone too far, crossed a line. I'll get to the suggestion in a moment. I won't even go into the cruelty and trauma of this, I think people know what it is, except to say that it was unnecessary, and ankle bracelets have been used and could have been used to make sure people turned up for their asylum hearing, so this was not necessary. Congressman John Lewis, who I think just got out of the hospital, and we all wish him well, he just had some health problems, he's in his 80s, he's been arrested 45 times for civil disobedience and the cause of civil rights and human rights. Congress, uh, Senator, these are extraordinary times. You've alluded to it yourself, and they demand extraordinary action. Holding hearings, filing legislation, and taking votes is just not enough. That's the usual stuff that you do, it's not enough. This is the United States Human Rights Emergency, and we're not acting as if it is. So my suggestion to you is that you link arms with the entire Massachusetts congressional delegation, go to the Department of Justice, block the entrance, get yourselves arrested, and get tremendous media in your favor. You will rally millions of people around the country who are as upset as I am and all these people in the audience. I think you can be very effective doing that, and I'd like your response.
Okay, here's, okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for, uh, raising this issue. So what I did three weeks ago is I went down to the Mexican border. I went down to where, uh, the parents are incarcerated. I went down to where they were separating the children from the parents, a separate location. I went over to where the children were being kept, Casa Presidente, it's called, okay? Where the children are there without their parents. And so I went down there. I spent two days down there, um, in the face of ICE, in the face of Customs and Border Patrol, in the face of the Department of Health and Human Services, on the border in Texas, right with Mexico, right across the line, okay? So I did that. And I did that in order to make sure that they knew that especially these 2,000 kids who they had separated from their parents were going to be reunited with their parents, and it was not going to be acceptable, okay? So that's why I went down there. Now, the deadline for them to finish it was Tuesday of this week. Now what they're saying is that they are, have now reunited all of these children with their parents who are eligible to be reunited. Key word is eligible, eligible. So what we now have is a situation where they've left these children in a legal limbo where they're here, and on that first or second day, they just took the parent and sent him back to Mexico. This is no way for the United States of America to be acting. In my conversations with these people down on the border, and by the way, what I did was I had kids from Chelsea and Lawrence and Spanish write Valentines in Spanish to the kids, so I could hand them all their special Valentine, okay? Card by card to each one of the children down at Casa Presidente, and they were hugging these letters. And the letters were saying, "We love you. People in the United States love you. They do not want harm to come to you or your families." And you could see how desperate so many of these kids were, which is why I went down there, why I brought letters from children in Massachusetts to them. So what is clear, it's, is that Trump, if you kick him in the heart, you're gonna break your toe. And I agree with you that we have to ratchet up the pressure even more on this man. But understand this, even this morning, he tweeted out that he wants the government of the United States shut down unless he gets his wall that's built. Can you imagine that? Just the absolute irresponsibility of it, as he has children who are crying for their mothers and fathers, hundreds of them still down there on the border or scattered all across the United States of America. So I can promise you this, okay? Uh, that I have been doing everything that I can, you know, to fight him, including going down there to the border. Uh, I'm not through. It's an absolute crime against our country. Understand that he's, he's already turned down a deal that Chuck Schumer and Nancy Pelosi offered him, but we are saying simultaneously, you've gotta legalize all of these DACA kids. You've gotta legalize and give protection to all these, um, temporary protected children and adults who have been fleeing from Haiti, fleeing from other countries, uh, down in the southern hemisphere. So he's turned it down. He wants this to be an issue in the election. And we want it to be an issue in the election, okay? So I'm gonna continue to do everything that I can. Uh, I'll cogitate on your idea, uh, but I'm not done. I'm not done. I, 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 I absolutely believe that we need more activity.
(inaudible).
I, I'm, again, I, I could see it. I, I could see it when I was with them down on the border. It's why I went. And by the way, I then had CNN trail me so I would have it be the lead story on CNN that night, so they would be there to cover the story. What we have to do is continue...
(inaudible) I'm in trouble, okay?
Yeah.
I'm vulnerable. If you get arrested, you're insulated, and your fellow Congressmen and Senators, you have built in this (inaudible).
I got it, I got it, thank you. No, I, got it, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you, sir. Yes, over here, yes?
Hi, I'm Andy from Weymouth, and I just don't understand why can't Democrats, like you, just do what Republicans did to Obama's nominee for the Supreme Court? 'Cause as far as I'm concerned, if this Kavanaugh guy gets in, nothing else really matters. Why can't you do exactly what the Republicans did and not even have a vote? Because earlier you said, "Oh, we'll probably vote on it in September." That's before the elections.
Well, the answer is this, that Mitch McConnell has now changed it from 60 votes you need for a Supreme Court justice down to 51. He's changed the rules after 200 years, okay? We don't have the votes to change it back. We're gonna have the votes on November 2nd to change it back, but until, until we win that election, he's writing the rules, and this is a, and he ruthlessly enforces the prerogatives of the Republican Party. So that's why I was saying earlier to the gentleman, it's imperative that people keep their voices high and know that the Democrats are going to demand all 1 million pages of the relevant writings of Brett Kavanaugh, so that a whole country can't understand what the consequences are. And every Republican running this November is paying the political price for backing someone like Brett Kavanaugh. That's what we're gonna do. Ultimately, this is gonna be a voting issue by the American people. the presidential election, right? What they're deciding to do right now is just to fast-track Brett Kavanaugh, just to get it done. It's going to be a big issue. Democrats don't want any vote before Election Day in 2018. We're, we're saying absolutely no vote. Every Democrat is saying the same thing. But he's intending on rolling, and what we need to do is just have a public uprising across the country. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Ellen Shannon from Quincy. My son died at Bonestable County Jail because someone gave him heroin. It was his first time, and he died four years ago. There was no knock hand given to him. It wasn't something that they did. I have a witness that was excoriated later. His sister was mentally ill, and she got him in jail. And he came forward, and he said that a prison guard gave my son mouth-to-mouth. It didn't work, and there was no medical personnel on site. Took 40 minutes for my son to be brought to Falmouth Hospital. Again, no knock hand. This issue of criminal justice ties him with opioids. There are a lot of mentally ill people, which my son was one of, that get tied up in the law because they can't control their emotions, even when they see people, they're on medication, they stop. A lot of mentally ill, like people that are physically ill, think maybe they can do it without their medications. What can be done about this? What can we do so that when people fall the wrong way because they're mentally ill, or they have a problem with drugs, or they're heroin addicts, why can't there be help for them? They're still people, even if they've done minor things wrong. Mind you, he was not in prison. He was in a minor facility at Bonestable Correctional Facility.
Okay, so, and, and, we're so sorry. My wife is a psychiatrist. When I met my wife 33 years ago, she was a researcher at SAMSA. That's NIH, that's Substance Abuse and Mental Health. It's one agency. They go together, substance abuse and mental health, SAMSA. And so she told me then, 33 years ago, on our first date, about how depression was stigmatized, how problems with substances is stigmatized, and that our job was going to be to de-stigmatize so that it was treated as though it was as real as a disease of having broken your leg. Huh? It's a problem. So in the 1990s, we incarcerated an entire generation of African-American young men as part of the crack cocaine epidemic. We owe an apology to that entire generation. We did not give them the care which they needed. And the same thing is true here. We have to make sure that the funding is there, that the understanding is there, that mental health problems are treated the same as any physical...
I tried my entire life to get help. I'm a citizen of Massachusetts. This state should have been there. Nobody would take the case. Nobody would take the case. No one wants to go up against DAs. I went to two different attorneys. Nobody will take the case of these people because they know it's just too powerful of a system to take on. And you're limited to three years.
Right. As my, as my wife said to me, there was a whole movement to de-institutionalize people with mental problems in the 70s and 80s.
It failed.
And we did it, but we didn't find a substitute for what those institutions were providing.
Waiting...
Exactly. And so we have to continue down this journey, and we should be the leaders, okay? We should be the leaders on this. And just telling your story tonight has had an impact on me and I think everyone else here. Thank you.
Also, Senator, thank you for coming, and the judge on the case, because the prisoner that gave my son did go to jail for manslaughter, and he asked me if I would advocate for mentally ill people to do a refunding in Massachusetts.
And you're doing it tonight. Thank you. And it's heard, and it's heard. Thank you. Okay. This is going to be the final question. I apologize to you, but I just, a lot of people came out here with an understanding that it would be an hour and a half, and we've gone an hour and 20 minutes right now. Yes, ma'am, final question.
Yes, my name is Jean Morse Jones, and I'm from Hingham, and I'm a board member of the Alzheimer's Association here in Massachusetts and New Hampshire. And I would like to thank you and all of our federal congressional representatives, as well as our state representatives, for leading the fight in Alzheimer's. It is the sixth-largest, deadliest disease in America, and there are no survivors. So you have helped to lead the fight to get us legislation to improve the life of patients and their families, and to get us the appropriate research funding. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You know, I, my mother, actually, my mother died from Alzheimer's 20 years ago last week, and it's hard to really deal with Alzheimer's, just a hard, hard disease because you can see this erosion which is taking place. So I had to wait about six months, and then I created the Alzheimer's Caucus in Congress. It didn't have a caucus. There was one for breast cancer, one for AIDS, but nothing for Alzheimer's. Right now, 5 million Americans have Alzheimer's. By the time all the baby boomers have retired, it will be 15 million baby boomers with Alzheimer's in our country. The budget for Alzheimer's, Medicare and Medicaid, will be bigger than the entire defense budget. That's just the way it is. 60% of all people in nursing homes have, are on Medicaid. That's where the nursing home beds are. So what I was able to do in 2014 was to pass a law, and it's called the Alzheimer's Bypass Law. And NIH each year has to say to Congress, "Here's how much money we need to find the cure by 2025." So in 2014, they said they needed 300 million more. 2015, 400 million more. 2016, 400 million more. This year, another 400 million. So now the budget for Alzheimer's research, just in four years, has gone at the federal level from 400 million to 1.8 billion a year, because we have to attract the smartest young people to move over to try to find this cure, because failure is not an option. When I was a boy, President Kennedy had a mission to the moon. In this generation, it's a mission to the mind, which is the biggest still unsolved problem that we have. And only by increasing medical research dramatically are we going to find the cure. So thank you for your nice words. Thank you for being here. We also were joined by former city council president and current school committee member Doug Guttrow, who is here. Where are you, Doug? Please raise your hand over here. Thank you for coming. I can't, I can't thank you all enough for being out here. Just understand this, the city of presidents, special place. The American Revolution, it started right here. The abolitionist movement, it started right here. The suffragette movement, right here. The Affordable Care Act movement, that revolution started right here. Gay marriage, right here. Massachusetts, we are the revolutionaries. You must keep this revolution going. Thank you all so much for coming out here tonight in the city of presidents. Thank you all so, so much.